All right, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Parton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Here.
Counselor Harris.
Here.
Counselor Ellis.
Here.
Counselor Day.
Here.
Counselor Repoli.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. Did Ms. Stenks call in?
She's not attending, she didn't call in.
Okay, gotcha. All right. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda to remove R. 1?
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Counselor Day and seconded by Vice Mayor Joyner. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Harris. Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Repoli.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Okay, thank you. All right. At this time, do I have a motion to go into closed meeting under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A 38 and 29? To discuss the acquisition or disposition of real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, the award of a public contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the city's bargaining position, and to consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters, real estate contract discussions, unsolicited offer on city-owned real estate, 2.2-3711A 1, to discuss and consider personnel matters, including board and commission appointments, HRHA and KHB, and 2.2-3711A 6, to discuss the investment of public funds where bargaining is involved, where if made public initially, the financial interests of the city would be adversely affected. Hopewell Public Schools roof repairs, and 2.2-3711A 8, Kevin Randisi, ARB appeal. Motion's been made by Counselor Day and seconded by Vice Mayor Joyner. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Harris. Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Repoli.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Okay. Come out of a closed session? Do I have a motion to come out of a closed meeting?
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Joyner and seconded by Counselor Repoli. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Harris. Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Repoli.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay. Certification, please.
Certification under Virginia Code 2.2-3712D, where only public business matters, one, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and two, identified on the closed meeting motion discussed in the closed meeting.
Roll call.
Counselor Harris. Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Counselor Day. Counselor Repoli.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you all for coming out to tonight's city council meeting. We have a full agenda ahead of us for tonight, and we will start off with the report from the city manager.
Mayor Council, a couple of items up front. One, we are continuing the process for the search for a new Hopewell Water Renewal Director. We will receive a report from the recruitment consultant on the third, 2nd of December. We've spent all day looking at the first round of candidates to get it down to three to five that we will interview. And we expect that that process will lead to us making an appointment in the first week of January. And with respect to the city manager, I've sent all of you a note from the recruiter in terms of your responsibilities, and we'll be scheduling interviews with the consultant for all of you for December 3rd. And so we ask you to kind of make that time available so we can get that out of the way. And the consultant is expecting that if we follow his schedule, we should be making an appointment of the city manager the first week of March.
Okay.
Okay. Now, we have a report by the deputy city manager on the finances at this point.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This is the October fiscal year '26 financial report. Citywide, for October, revenues are trending .97 or 2. million lower for fiscal year '26 versus '25. A lot of that decrease comes from our federal grants that we're supposed to receive for the schools. They are behind submitting requests for Head Start program. With their transition from their older system to Munis, they're having an issue getting some reporting out so that they can submit in their reverse request. Expenses for October are trending 1% or 2.2 higher in '26 versus '25. Again, the key due dates for the city of Hopewell are December, February, May, and June. Currently, the treasurer's office is working on bringing in revenue for the second half of real estate, which is due December 5th. Any questions so far? Our general fund for October is trending .86 or 449,000 low-end revenues for '26 versus '25. Expenses for '26 are trending .37% or $202,000 higher than '25. Increases in expenses stem from annual increases in class and comp study increases that were implemented last fiscal year. Our enterprise fund? Any questions on the general fund? Our enterprise fund for October is trending 5.33 or $2.4 million higher in revenues for '26 versus '25. That is due to the city billing capital upfront now instead of holding it to the end of the fiscal year. Now for '25, we are still waiting for payments from the industry of about $3.5 million for capital that the city fronted for payments that we're waiting for on reimbursement.
Okay.
Okay. Expenses for '26 are trending 4.2% or $1.9 million higher in expenses. Increases in revenues stem from on-time billing and billing of capital upfront. Any questions on enterprise? For schools, schools is trending 6.5 or 4.1 lower in expenses in revenues for '26 versus '25. Again, that stems from the ESSAR grant as well as the reimbursements that we're waiting for for Head Start. Expenses are trending .59% or $59,000 higher in '26 versus '25. Again, the decrease in federal revenues become from Head Start and ESSAR. The schools will not be receiving ESSAR grants, and I also talked to the schools to ensure that there was not a need for them to readjust their budget. The Head Start funds will come through for the city and they will be back on track per January. For accounts payable for October, we processed 1,100 invoices and we paid over $5.8 million. Again, our debt service is on time. For November, we'll discuss the fiscal year '24. It's due to be completed on December 31st. As of right now, there is nothing that is stopping us from being on time for our '24 ACFR. And '25 is due to be completed in March 31st of 2026. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Stacy, we close on the graph.
Yes.
On the 19th.
We close on the bonds tomorrow, $15 million. We have submitted the expenditure list to our bond council on what the items will be appropriated for based off of what council had already approved. Now, these projects can be switched, but it has to be based on what was approved through council on the ordinance and the resolution that was adopted. So we can't use capital funding on operations. It has to be specific based off of what the ordinance and resolution stated in regards to capital projects for roofing or half-back or stuff like that. So it's not money that the city will just get and can use willy-nilly. It has to be specific based on what was adopted by council through the ordinance or resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, we have an overview of the crime statistics by the chief. Chief, you hear what I said?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. I am here to give you the crime summary for the month of November, and it's very small compared to last month's. So getting started, first one, the violent crime toll, we're up a little bit, 5%. Toll, the robberies is still, is one of the major factors, and those robberies are individual robberies and they are random acts. Under our property crime, we are down, minus 31%. So a total of major crime, we are down minus 25%. And moving to the next slide, this slide was, wanted to give you a kind of a gauge of pre-technology, going back to 2022 and comparing 2022 to where we at in 2025. And if you look at the change from 2022, which is pre-technology, to this time now, is minus 24% decrease in violent crime. Total property crimes, if you compare 2022 to 2025, will down minus 27%. So if you look at those years, compared total major crime is down 27%. So technology is very beneficial for the city.
And that's also when Operation Ceasefire in real life came into picture too.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Yep.
Moving to the next slide, opioid overdoses were still down compared to previous years. This year so far has only been three fatal, 31 non-fatal, and a grand total of 34. So over the previous years, we're still down. Next slide, the verified shots fired were still about the same where we were at in 2024. Were 50 in 2024, 49 so far in 2025. And we're working, we're flopped. And I did receive that quote for the gun censors, and we will be talking, discussing that with the city manager and the deputy city manager to see where we're gonna go forward on that area. Neighborhood watch meetings, nothing has changed. Block captains remain the same. Moving to the next slide on hiring recruitment. Recruitment team attended the job fair Randolph-Macon College on the 13th. They attended job fair Virginia Career Works in Chesterfield that will be November 19th. Once again, five will be starting academy in January. They'll graduate July 2027. Five police applicants remain in the background investigation. Five emergency communication operators, applicants are in the background stage. And currently, six police positions are open to include the three unfunded positions that will open January the 1st of 2026. And the next academy starts January the 5th, and hopefully, we'll have more recruits attending that academy when it starts. Community police and officer awards remains the same, no changes. Our community engagement activities in the month of November, the community engagement officer has been collecting food items for James House for our community partnerships efforts. Also, on December 9th, Officer Reed David, the first business resource meeting, will be held at the Water Cup Restaurant at 5:30 PM, that's the, in Long Island Boulevard. And he also is working with Recover Hope, which is a human trafficking agency, to raise awareness and plans to help raise money by having a raffle to raise funds to stop the safe house. We are waiting confirmation from the business partners on the prizes to be donated for the raffle. Traffic study and technology. The traffic study for schools on speed cameras near Broadway Baptist Church on West Broadway is pending. We've already communicated with them and hopefully, it's already started. And also, once that's completed, Wesleyan Christian School will be the next location for the speed study. And once again, I did get the quote for the gun detectives that'd be deported in the city. And that concludes my crime summary, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Okay, I got a couple of questions, okay. One is, and you know, you did note that on, when we're looking at the crime summaries and the stats, the robberies that are up, and you said they're sort of random. Do we have, I mean, I know we're looking at a total of 13, but do we have any idea? I mean, is this one purse? I mean, do you have any idea?
No, I just spoke with our crime analysis, and I talked to her about this, and she did some research on this. And we have no specific crime pattern or no specific groups or committing this. It's just really been random acts.
Okay, yeah, okay. All right. My other question has to do with, so how many vacancies do we currently have? Is that the five that you mentioned down there? Or how many total vacancies do we have? Because it talks about people coming in and out and that kind of thing. How many total vacancies do we have right now?
Currently, with the six that's in the academy that I put on here, and the two positions that are frozen, and I just have to include one more that went to another jurisdiction, so it was a total of nine.
We got nine, nine, okay. That's a whole lot better than it used to be, you know, a few years ago. And finally, my last question. What's related to the traffic? We talked a little while ago that you, you know, we're one of the only jurisdictions that does not have a dedicated traffic division, okay? And you had mentioned that once we became more fully staffed, that your plans were to implement that. Do you have any timetable on that?
Well, that is a goal, and we will be looking, if staffing continues to increase, and my primary goal is to get that crime suppression unit so we can have a detective unit to focus on guns and drugs and other issues in the city.
Yeah.
But that goal of still in that traffic unit is gonna be a slow process. We probably will move one or two officers in that position.
Right.
But we'll look at it realistically, probably sometime 26, 27.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Mr. Rogers, did you have anything that you wanted to say?
No, I just wanted to thank Chief for that brief overview.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right, moving on to actions from closed session. Do we have a motion to appoint Ms. Stephanie Dayberry to keep Hopewell beautiful? And Ms. Sharah Fuller to the Hopewell Redevelopment Housing Authority?
Second. Second.
Okay. I think I heard Counselor Repoli first. I'll get, I'll.
I was realizing we were grouping together.
Oh, that's.
She did it on the first one.
That's all right. I'll let you have that one. Those motions made by Counselor Repoli and seconded by Vice Mayor Joyner. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Repoli.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Okay. Also, do I have a motion to direct the city manager to issue a letter in support of Hopewell Public Schools' application to the Virginia Board of Education School Construction Assistance Program in substantially the form presented to city council?
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Counselor Day and seconded by Counselor Ellis. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Repoli.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right. All right. Will you all please rise for the prayer and for the pledge of allegiance? Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us. We thank you for allowing us to live in a country where we can come and exercise free democracy and let our voices be heard and conducted the business of the city. Lord, we pray that you will be with us and that you will guide us in our decision-making. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Moving on to the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Joyner, seconded by Counselor Day. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Repoli.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Okay. Moving on to communications from citizens. Ms. Howard, will you please read the statement?
A communication from citizens period limited to a total of 30 minutes occurs at each regular council meeting. Persons addressing council approach the microphone, give their name and if they reside in Hopewell, they will be worked out. Each comment is limited to three minutes. No person is permitted to speak on an item scheduled for public hearing. All remarks must be addressed to the council everybody. Any person who makes personal, impertinent abuse or slanderment or threats or decides disloyal conduct in council chambers may be barred for future communications from citizens and removed.
Okay. First person that's signed up for tonight is Ms. Laura Greenwood.
Get my stopwatch. Good evening, my name's Laura Greenwood, and I'm from Ward 6. I'm here to address the Director of Economic Development, Charles Bennett, and his proposals for new development. As a retired commercial artist promoter, et cetera, I'm impressed with his presentations and the work he puts into them. I personally have done many for generals at Toby Hann Army Depot and at Fort Benner War College, so I'm quite aware of what goes into them. Let's be honest, though. Hopewell is an industrial city. We do not have tourists coming here. We have small business owners who struggle trying to make a profit against the lack of local customers' involvement and the taxes that are laid upon them by the council. I strongly suggest Mr. Bennett work on how to get our locals engaged in activities around the downtown area in his pet project Marina. Everyone I've spoken to is in favor of the pavilion, but not the restaurant. I strongly suggest Mr. Bennett investigates what Applematic Boat Harbor Camp, which is Colonial Heights Marina and James City County Jamestown Marina managers are doing and what they do to promote events to bring income into those two localities. There are two that I'm aware of that is closest to us, those are the two. All I'm saying is I've heard time and time again his departments in the red. Why, so why does the council always handing him money, more money, hundreds of thousands of dollars? Can we start looking at how to get the department in the black, making profit? Shouldn't that be our first-go concern? Don't you think getting citizens involved and helping him with the event planning first? Now is the time, more than seasons kicked in, before the season kicks in? I know that Jamestown Marina, when I lived in Williamsburg for over 18 years, had all kinds of events and winter events. Chili cook-off, screw winter parties, Colonial Heights has all the big music events during the season. These types of events can be promoted at a very reasonable cost and in return, bringing in profits. Isn't it about time, about getting citizens engaged and enjoying themselves and profits coming in? Again, I'm willing to offer my assistance free of charge, and I am sure the people at the boat that have slips at the boats would be helpful to get involved. I have been engaged in many types of events through the military, different localities. Example, the Yorktown Bicentennial event. That's 2 minutes 53 seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, I have Mr. David Edwards.
How there. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with y'all. I've got two properties at 320 Maryland Avenue and 322. I've got a house beside me that I've got a lot of problems with. I've gone to somebody, I'm not even sure the lady's name, down at the building I was planning, about cleaning up the backyard. Nothing's been done. She said, "No problem," she did it done. I've got, Ms. Joyner was nice enough to help me with two boats that sat out there on the road for two and a half years. We finally got them moved. Not sure how, but what I'm told is if they're licensees, they can park anywhere in the city they want to. I don't understand that. I've got two people living in a car on the street every day. The license, the license on the car is outdated. I went to the police department two weeks ago, and they say that there's nothing they can do. So, I mean, they've got eight or 10 cats every time you walk in the yard. You're getting that on your feet. And I've got five, y'all was nice enough to give me a special exception for these two houses. I've got $500,000 tied up in them, and I'm almost embarrassed to put them up for sale. So when y'all gave me the special exception, I told you that I was positively selling them. But if I can't sell them, I'm gonna have to run them. I mean, if people, they park right in front of my property, so I mean, I'm not sure what I'm supposed to do. So if anybody can help me, Ms. Joyner's tried. I've tried to get the backyard cleaned up. I've got, I've got to go by setbacks. The house beside me is not by setbacks. So when you look out the window of my house, you can see their backyard full of junk. And the house is owned by somebody in Midlothian, so they don't, they don't give a rub. So if it's anything I can do to get some help, I would appreciate it. I'm not sure who else I'm supposed to go to.
This young lady up here in the second row in the middle, next to the fire chief, her name is Ms. Davis. You can get with her, and you can go through and work through a lot of these code violations with her staff. And if you still continue to have some issues, we do have, you know, a new public nuisance ordinance that's in place that we might be able to, you know, work off of. But I'd like for you to, you know, work with Ms. Davis and her boss, Mr. Ward, first.
One other thing I would, these people are living in cars right across from West End School. I mean, that, that is not, I mean, kids are playing out there all day long, and they're sitting in their cars with doors wide open. Just, I mean, it's ridiculous. So I appreciate it. What office is she?
Code enforcement, planning, development.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay. The next person I have signed up is Deborah Edwards. Defer to her husband, right? All right. Next I have signed up is Russell Batten.
I'm not the first time I've been here. My daddy's from the city of Hopewell. And I got a question. About the cemetery. I have not weedied around my daddy's grave. It's flat ground, and all grass is over top of it. I've been down there. I don't know what y'all gonna do. If y'all want me to go down and weed around my daddy's grave, I will. And nothing has been done. I got the pictures on my phone. And nothing has been done.
Yes, sir. Let's see, there she is. We have our interim director for public works.
I've been down there. I've been down there. I've been down there, and I went twice down there and complained about it.
You probably ended up getting somebody in the customer service front desk.
I went to the, I went to the, I went down, I went to the, down there, the city shop.
Yes, sir, I understand. What I'm saying is, if you get with this lady over here at the very end of the third row, she's responsible for all of her employees, and she can, and she also manages the contract for grass cutting on the cemetery. So she can, you know, she can get with you and, you know, and answer, you know, all the questions and ensure that, you know, the cemetery gets cut.
Okay.
And Mr. Rogers, you as well will, you know, make sure.
I've noted.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay? Okay, uh, next I have, uh, Ms. Sharaw Fuller. Are you good? Okay. All right, next is, uh, Mr. Mark Burrows.
Good evening, it's been a little while. Um, I'm sure y'all appreciated the reprieve. Uh, my name's Mark Burrows, I'm Ward Three, uh, I think.
Ward One.
I'm.
You're Ward Three.
Ward Three. Somewhere in Hopewell City is where I live. I don't even know what street I live on, okay? Uh, the reason I signed up to speak this evening is, we all know, um, we had elections. Some things went the way folks wanted, some things went the way folks didn't want. As a conservative, as a constitutionalist, I'm worried about the future for our state. I'm worried about the future for our city. I know in the past, other cities, um, uh, other counties have preemptively taken measures to ensure that their citizens' rights are not infringed upon as different governing agencies have tried to do so, whether that be a sanctuary city for illegals or to a sanctuary city, whichever side of the spectrum you wanna go on. Uh, it's been done in the past. Uh, and I, I wanted to talk to y'all for a couple minutes about that this evening. We know some of these legal battles are coming to Virginia, uh, here in the next few months. Um, and I want to ask each one of y'all to dig deep within yourselves and realize that you don't rep- represent your own voice, your own opinions, you represent ours. You owe us, citizens, the hardest fight you have ever put forward to protect our rights, whether you agree with them or you don't. Whether everybody in the city agrees with them or they don't. They're enshrined for a purpose. They're enshrined for a reason. I just want to get it in front of y'all that I hope y'all can go ahead and wrap your minds, your hearts around the fight that maybe, that y'all may be in for in the future in defending our rights. Our right to speech, to religion, to, to our Second Amendment. You know, all these things that the state is inevitably going to be putting pressure on y'all to encroach upon. And I want y'all to remember that you are our voice to those people, you and our delegates are our voice to those people. And I hope that you take that as seriously as we hope that you, that we want y'all to. So, thank y'all.
Thank you. Okay, uh, next is Ms. Darlene Thompson.
Darlene Thompson, Ward Six. Each time I come before you all is always about how you all are spending taxpayer dollars, not listening to our concerns as to what it is that we would like seeing, seeing done for this city. We have observed you all paying, spending seventeen thousand dollars for a retreat. We have seen your city manager and your deputy going to Florida, Tampa, Florida, on the taxpayers' back that we have to pay. I came before you all a couple of years ago and just asked, could we do something as far as collecting leaves in Hopewell? Nothing done. You keep coming before you all, you all keep voting to spend money. Charles Bennett has come up here repeatedly. Last October, he came up here for a half million dollars for the Marina. Came back for ninety-four thousand dollars for the Marina. And if I'm not mistaken, Johnny Pardon said that he can keep the slip money that comes in. Whenever we sell tax, um, real estate in the city, he's able to keep that money. But anytime, anything that we ask for, we can never get it. You all never listen to the concern of the constituents. It is, it is if, if we do not exist. And we have four of you all going up next year for reelection. And I hope the people is engaged and be able to see that you all are not working on our behalf and do not receipt you all. Make sure that you all are not receipted because you all do nothing for the taxpayers. We only get a bill. I see where y'all are getting ready to increase our sewage. Stacey Jordan money don't change. The city manager money doesn't change. He's making twenty-one thousand dollars to pretty much delegate in this city. Every time Robert Bob Group comes in, it's about how we can borrow money and, and get things done. When you all had already gotten over seven million dollars, three years in a row. And the four of you all that's sitting there that's up for reelection was the one that voted for us to have to pay more taxes. And now here you all are now talking about increasing the sewage. You all don't stop when it comes to these citizens. Our voices are not being heard now, but next year, don't start January one acting like you are working on our behalf. I hope they are keeping track of what you all are doing now.
Ms. Thompson, your time is up.
Always. Thank you.
Okay, and next up is Mr. Kevin Randee- Randeezy. Are these general comments or these for your, uh, public hearing?
Just general comments, nothing to do with the public hearing tonight.
Okay.
Uh, Kevin Randeezy, I own a commercial building right outside here. I think it's Ward One. I don't know if it's Ward One or Ward Two. It's one of those two. You can take your pick, but, um, here to speak tonight and, um, I wanted to talk about homeownership and all of the vacant land that the City of Hopewell owns, uh, around the city. I do searches throughout the city. I do a lot of research on this, uh, particular city. And I see that the City of Hopewell owns a ton of land that hasn't been developed for anything. And it's, uh, it's really weird. Everybody here complains about how the city has no money and they, uh, struggling for tax revenue here, tax revenue there. But they don't do anything with the land that's just owned by the City of Hopewell. It's not, it's off the tax rolls. It's not collecting any revenue. Uh, there's no buildings on it, so the buildings could be taxed. And there's nothing that's being done as far as pushing homeownership. And I think that's a huge problem in our city. It's about sixty percent renters in the City of Hopewell. And right now, the City of Hopewell is making a fortune for the surrounding counties. So, the surrounding counties are, uh, making a fortune by buying rental property in the City of Hopewell and all the money just keeps flowing out of the city. And I think that the City of Hopewell should look into taking some of that vacant land that the City of Hopewell owns, look at getting with organizations such as Partnership for Housing Affordability or Project Homes or one of those nonprofit organizations and start building homes that, uh, homeowners can actually buy and homeowners can actually live in and generate tax revenue and generate wealth for themselves instead of rich landlords.
Thank you. Okay. All right, this time, uh, I'm going to make a few comments to correct some information that was given out tonight during the communications from citizens. A comment was made that the city does not have a leaf collection program. That is incorrect. That there is an actual program where citizens can have, uh, their leaves picked up at a very nominal cost. And also, uh, senior citizens get a discount. Uh, so I encourage citizens to please go on the city's website to get the correct information on that. And then also to correct, uh, that, you know, city council was, um, you know, has just been spending money just, you know, frivolously on things. That this city council has actually spent more money on capital improvements, facility maintenance, infrastructure, road repaving and utility system upgrades than any other city council has in the last twelve years. So, uh, I encourage citizens to, you know, look at the projects that were approved. There will be a substantial amount of road repaving done in neighborhoods. There will be, um, improvements done to the community center. There will also be, uh, um, stormwater drainage improvement projects done to prevent sinkholes from happening and deteriorating people's houses and their roads. I also want to encourage people to look at it so that way they can see that sewer infrastructure is gonna get done. That way, you know, that of the, you know, twenty-plus pump stations that we have, we're tackling at least two or three of them. So, I encourage you all to please look at all the projects that are being funded on the list and, uh, look forward to getting those projects executed so that way, uh, citizens can have a much better quality of life. All right, moving on to our regular business. Our first item is gonna be the codification of recreation and parks fees, public hearing. Ms. Martinez. Uh, you should've signed up, ma'am.
Thank you, appreciate it. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Tonight I stand before you tonight, um, based off of recommendation to codify our recreation and parks fees that city council had previously approved, uh, for the twenty-twenty-six and twenty-twenty-seven year. This has been advertised twice as required. Uh, the only new difference that has not been approved, um, that I wanna make sure I highlight, is the general fees. Um, and that's just essentially the city recouping what it will cost to go after a return check fee, chargeback recovery, which is for debit card, credit card versus on our software system, and a rental cancellation fee for administrative, um, fee. So, with that being said, those are the only new fees and that's consistent across most departments and regard, in regards to the return check fee and the chargeback recovery fee. Happy to answer any questions in regards to that.
Okay, are there any questions for Ms. Martinez? See in no lights. Uh, is there a motion, or excuse me, this is a, uh, public hearing. I do not have anyone signed up for this public hearing, uh, tonight. Go ahead and open it up. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this public hearing that didn't speak or sign up for it? No, this is for Parks and Recreation. Okay, hearing none. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close it. All right, is there a motion to approve the codification of parks and, uh, realis- parks and recreation, uh, fees as presented tonight?
So moved.
All right, motion's been made by Vice Mayor Joyner and seconded by Counselor Ellis. Is there any discussion? See in no lights, roll call please.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mia Pardon?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Repole?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passed as six zero.
Thank y'all so much.
Uh, moving on to our three, Mr. Ward.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I have, uh, two, uh, conditional use permit requests for you this evening. It's under the new, uh, way that we're doing this. We'll do one public hearing for both applications. Uh, the first one this evening is, uh, related to thirty-four hundred Oaklawn Boulevard, parcel zero eight-nine-one-three-nine-five. The conditional use permit request is to use this property as a single-family dwelling. So, some background here, uh, this, uh, address is about a quarter acre. The applicant is ANK Enterprises and the property is located in Ward Seven. It is Zone B four, Corridor Development District. And future land use designation, uh, for this particular property is corridor commercial. Again, the request is to use the property as a single-family dwelling. Uh, you may remember this, we dealt with this a number of years ago, um, for a similar, uh, conditional use permit application. Uh, this property did, uh, transition to a commercial use back in twenty-twenty-one. Um, it was a sign shop. It's been a couple of other things since that time and that was under a previous owner. As you can see, uh, the current, uh, zoning and land use for this property basically be, be for follows this entire corridor. And future land use, uh, does the same. It actually, uh, drops back, uh, to the, uh, parallel street that's behind it. So, uh, future land use calls for corridor commercial in this, through this whole area and taking up the whole block. So, the applicant's position is that the historical function of this property has always been as a single-family dwelling, uh, previous to its transition in twenty-twenty-one. The property does conform to residential zoning requirements. It supports the comprehensive plan by promoting sustainable land use. And residential use addresses housing needs and prevents blight. And there are no significant negative impacts of a single-family dwelling use. So, again, some background, previous owner did receive an approved conditional use permit from city council on this property. It was back in August twenty-three, uh, to use as a single-family dwelling. Uh, that conditional use permit did have a sunset provision in it and it was conditioned, uh, the use was conditioned to cease when that particular tenant that was in the property at the time vacated the property. And, uh, just for clarity's sake, the property owner had placed a tenant in that property prior to acquiring the CUP. So, it was an occupied residence at the time that the owner came through with the conditional use permit, thereby lending itself to the, allowing the use to continue as it was, but to, to sunset the provision. So, for all those reasons, uh, staff is recommending to deny all of the request. The future land use plan does designate this area as corridor commercial and supports the transition from residential to commercial use. This property successfully, uh, did transition from residential to commercial use in twenty-twenty-one. The property does have adequate, uh, space for off-street parking. And essentially, uh, staff's position is the same as it was, um, back when we dealt with the prior conditional use permit. Planning Commission did vote four to zero to deny this request, uh, from ANK Enterprises to utilize parcel zero eight-nine-one-three-nine-five as a single-family dwelling use. They held a public hearing back on October second. We've not received any comments from the public. And the applicant, uh, did wanna say a few words, or representative of the applicant did wanna say a few words, um, before we get to public hearing.
Good evening. There was a date switch up. I think our original date was December ninth for this and this got moved up. So, continue to answer any questions you guys might have about this. We are requesting a conditional use permit. Um, it is a residential dwelling. Uh, we understand the city's comprehensive plan to wanna go to commercial. But on that block of, I believe, sixteen buildings, there are two commercial buildings. One is a seafood market and the other is a nonprofit, which is the Humane Society for Dads. As Mr. Ward stated, uh, previous tenants, owners have tried to circumvent the rules. We're trying to do everything above board, like the conditional use permit. We would like to, at some point, convert it into a business, but it is hard to convert to a business without having a business in mind because we have a residential building. We would have to outfit it for a business. We could just outfit it for whichever business. We would have to get an applicant that had a business plan and wanted to adjust this building, if that makes any sense. Did the council have any questions about the conditional use permit?
Vice Mayor Joyner?
I have time to. When you all purchased the building, did you, were you aware that it, I mean, it, according to this, there was a, there's a, there was a tenant in there? Did you realize that it wasn't really for, um, residential use?
Uh, the owner that sold, told us at closing. He mentioned at closing, he said, "We would have to get a CUP again." That was when we were at closing. Um, and then previously that, when it was a sign shop, that thirty-four hundred was also being used as a residence. There is a nine-hundred square foot section of the house that might've been an enclosed porch. That was the actual sign shop. The rest of the building was still being used as a residence the whole time.
And tell me again, I, I know where you, and I mean. And tell me again, I, I know where you, and I mean, I know the building and that kind of thing. Of that block, how many, how many um, what percentage of the um buildings are used as residential? I know there's the, there's the um, the-
The fish market.
The fish market, and there's the-
And the Humane Society.
But the rest of, and the rest of the whole is residential.
Are there any other questions? Okay, no? Alright, thank you.
If council doesn't have any questions for me, I'll move on to the second application. Second application is also a conditional use permit for, but uh this one relates to actually constructing a new single-family dwelling. Uh, the parcel is zero one one zero eight seven five located at four oh five North Three and a Half Avenue. The applicant is Henry K Properties LLC. This property is located in Ward one. It's just a uh stone's throw here from the municipal building. Property is zone R oh four, which is a residential office high-density district. Minimum lot size in this district is sixty feet wide and seventy-two hundred square feet. This particular parcel is only thirty feet wide, but it's pretty long and narrow, so it, it gets up there in total size. It's four thousand eighty square feet. So the non-conformities with this particular property are both in the width and the total square footage. The applicant's proposing to construct a two-story single-family dwelling here. It's a three-bedroom, one and a half bath, fourteen hundred square feet. The floor plan is shown here, and then on this slide, we've got uh the elevations all four sides. This proposed dwelling is actually just a little bit smaller than the average uh single-family dwelling in the neighborhood. Actually, it's right about, it's right close to it. Um, applicants proposing vinyl siding, which is uh quite common throughout this neighborhood. And uh even though it is a narrow lot, this particular structure will meet the district's setbacks. Uh, we've not received any public comment. And staff does recommend approval with the, of the conditional use permit with our standard conditions that we're all used to. And that is the twelve-inch minimum leaves, the twenty percent tree canopy, brick or stone foundation on all four sides. Uh, foundation plating's on the front, and essentially substantial conformance, the property will look like it was presented this evening. Planning Commission um on October seventh voted four to zero to rec- to recommend approval as well, but they added one additional condition to staff's. And that is to set the structure back from the front property line enough to install a driveway of asphalt or concrete that can accommodate two vehicles parked side by side. So this property is not wide enough to have off-street parking, either entered from the front or from the rear because there is no alley. So it would have to be on-street parking for this particular property unless um you go with Planning Commission's additional recommendation. I did a, excuse my graphic abilities, but this is the graphic I put together. Essentially, the house would have to be pushed back. Uh, it would not be in alignment with the other structures on this block in order to accommodate um driveway in the front yard. The applicant is here this evening. Mr. Bennett is here this evening. If you have any questions for him, I'm also available for any questions.
Does council have any questions? Seeing no lights, alright. I'm gonna go ahead and open a public hearing for both of these uh conditional use permits. Um, I have down here for both Mr. Bennett's. Um, either one of you guys want to say anything? Yeah.
So I just wanted to make sure you got the facts.
Yeah, yeah, I just saw on your comment where it just says if needed.
Yeah, yeah, I was sure if it was going to be the communication system.
Okay.
Thank you.
Outside them, uh, Ms. Laura Greenwood.
I just wanted to, I don't know, I don't know if I can say the word, but go back to my last comment before tonight. When um I addressed you guys about the wastewater.
Ma'am, this is only specifically for this public hearing.
Well, I thought that's what we're doing tonight.
You've, you've already had communications from citizens. This is a public hearing on the two conditional use permits.
My bad.
That's alright.
Get me straight.
That's alright.
Thank you.
Okay, alright, no one else? I'm gonna go ahead and close this public hearing on this one. Alright, um, I assume uh Mr. Bissett, you want separate motions?
Yes, we need the separate.
Okay, alright.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, uh, this is first reading, so you do have the ability to approve them this evening if it's five or more.
Okay.
Uh, or you can continue them to a second reading at the next meeting.
Okay.
So we're doing this, changing this up a little bit from how it's been done.
So the, this, the normal course would be for them to go on the consent agenda for the next meeting unless the councilor pulls it out to be voted on separately.
Okay, um, I'm getting some senses from members on council that they would like a second one hearing on this, so we'll do a second hearing for these guys. Alright. Moving on to uh R four, uh, Ms. Davis.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, can you all hear me? Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, uh, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm here today to present an appeal of the ARB decision for two oh six North Second Street. And this is specifically an appeal of a decision related to facade and changes to the paint color of the property. Um, since this is the first appeal to the ARB in quite some time, perhaps one of the first that this council has seen, I just want to do a brief overview of the Architectural Review Board and why that board exists. The Architectural Review Board is authorized under Virginia Code fifteen point two twenty-three oh six, and the City of Hopewell Code of Ordinance is Appendix A. That's a zoning ordinance, and that's under Article twenty-three, which is the Historic Preservation Ordinance. The ARB is a board that is appointed by city council, and it is five to seven members of citizens, property owners, or architectural and historic preservation people that have an interest in historic preservation in the City of Hopewell. The ARB's primary duty, duty set forth in the City of Hopewell Code is to review certificates of appropriateness for exterior changes to buildings in city historic districts. Specifically, that is the B one and T H one zoning districts. B one being the downtown district and T H one being the City Point Historic District. Uh, I want to also acknowledge that the city became a certified local government in December twenty twenty-four, which is in agreement with the State Historic Preservation Office that this ARB and the City of Hopewell will uphold certain standards and qualifications that are set by the state and by the National Park Service related to historic preservation. Planning and Development Staff, myself, uh, serves as liaison to the ARB. I'm not a member of the ARB. I'm the intermediary between applicants and the ARB, and I assist in running those meetings. The property in question tonight is two oh six North Second. It is located um just across the street on Second Avenue. You can see the, the map highlighted in blue, the property here. Um, and a picture as well. The, the office is a, or the building is a general office building in the B one zoning district. And according to city tax assessment records, it was constructed in nineteen sixteen. I want to give you a little history about the application itself. We received, uh, this has been going on since about June of this year. We received a request for exterior facade changes to paint the building blue. There were questions at the July ARB meeting about that application. And the applicant was not in attendance to be able to answer those questions. The ARB then directed staff to follow up with the applicant to get answers and receive information from the the Architectural Advisor to the ARB, which is a separate person um outside of the city who advises on matters of historic preservation for the ARB as part of that agreement to be a certified local government. Um, following that discussion and some back and forth with the applicant, that application was withdrawn in August. A second request was then submitted in September with some different paint color options. Um, the owner submitted with a revised color scheme. Uh, the front portion was to be painted, was, request was to be painted green, and the back portion would be painted a white color. Um, at the October ARB meeting, the ARB discussed a number of concerns particularly related to long-term preservation issues associated with painting historic brick that includes moisture entrapment and deterioration that can happen. The, the current ARB is very concerned about the, the uh maintenance of historic buildings in particular. And this is one of the, the issues that arises, and I'll go into that, this particular topic in a bit more detail in upcoming slides. At that meeting, the ARB chair asked whether the applicant would consider limiting the paint to the existing stucco portion, which had already been painted. That was agreed to by the applicant at the meeting. Uh, the ARB then voted to approve the revised acqua- request and paint with the paint color change for the stucco only by a vote of five to two. And the, the um, that stucco portion of the building has been painted since been painted. I want to briefly touch on some of the concerns with painted brick. So historically, brick is designed to breathe, so mortar between the brick helps the brick to allow moisture to escape. And that idea of breathing and not allowing moisture to be trapped within the building. When, when, when brick is painted with non-breathable paint, um, it traps that moisture, and that moisture trap, entrapment can accelerate deterioration of brick. Another primary concern with historic preservation is whether improvements or changes to a building that were not historically accurate are reversible. And so reverse decisions that can be easily reversed are, can be viewed more favorably than decisions that aren't reversible. Painting brick is rarely reversible without damage to the building. In the case of this particular building, in, in consultation with the Architectural Advisor, he had advised that a breathable paint like a lime wash would not necessarily be historically accurate for this building, and so the paint was not advisable. There are standards that the city is uh required to uphold. They are guidelines that are stated in the ordinance. They are not adopted as ordinances, but the ARB is directed to follow these standards. Some of these standards are listed here. Um, and particularly, the NPS, National Park Service Preservation Briefs, touch on the fact that waterproof coatings and certain paint types are not appropriate for historic buildings. And in general, it's not advisable to coat surfaces that have never been painted. I also want to briefly touch on past ARB decisions, acknowledging the fact that many buildings in downtown Hopewell have been previously painted. And that was something that has been done um over time. Allowing repainting of those buildings is consistent with the Secretary's standards because either that damage was already been done or hopefully the appropriate paint was used uh to, to accomplish the painting. Each case is also unique. Um, in some cases, if a structure has non-original materials, it may be appropriate to paint a building. Um, and in some cases, and where the ARB has headed since twenty twenty-four is not to allow painting of basements. I also want to acknowledge that the city, again, that certified local government status occurred in December twenty twenty-four. So past decisions related to painting, uh, this is really the first case since that certified local government status relating uh was achieved relating to the painting of un-painted brick. Uh, and so as is the right, um, according to state code and the city's code, uh, Mr. Rand D.C., the owner, has appealed the decision of the ARB. And the code sets forth the council's action or possible actions um in the case of an appeal. So the requirement is that uh the council hold up, open the public hearing. And the actions can be to affirm the decision of the ARB, reverse the decision of the ARB, and that could re- include reverse and remand the decision. Uh, modify the decision of the ARB or remand back to the ARB for reconsideration of the decision in whole or in part. And after that, the applicant would again be able to appeal after they remand. And with that, um, I stand ready to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Ms. Davis? Uh, Ms. Day?
I have a question. So if, if not, if we didn't follow the, if you didn't follow these guidelines, would that affect the city's standing of being a certified local government?
It could possibly in- impact our standing as local govern, uh, as a certified local government. One of the things that the ARB is doing as we speak uh is developing downtown design review guidelines that are specific to the City of Hopewell. And so once we have those, some of these more questionable issues where it could apply to certain areas or certain blocks or, or certain sections of the city, buildings of a certain age might be appropriate or, or be treated differently. Um, those things can be set out in our local design guidelines, which are under redevelopment.
And could it also affect like any kind of grant applications for anything historical?
The certified local government status does enable the city to apply to different grant opportunities. So if that were to be jeopardized, then, then there is conceivably um that, that source of grant funding could be no longer available for application.
Um, and the last question, just looking at the information that was provided us for the meeting, the original application, um, was it for the brick or was it for the stucco?
The original application was for both brick, the brick and the stucco. Um, one of the key concerns with that application uh was that it wa, the ARB questioned whether there was to be siding applied because of the, the renderings that were provided by the applicant at that time, along with concern about the, whether the brick was proposed to be painted and what the particular material or what particular product the applicant was proposing to paint.
Thank you.
Uh, Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to point out that um the city um for many years was striving to receive um a certified local government status, and it really is um, has a great benefit to the city. Um, last week, there was a, uh, the Department of Historic Resources held um a preservation workshop and training here where um a lot of surrounding communities came, and there were, there were speakers here from, that represented the state and national um historic registers on how to get, you know, how to get properties and neighborhoods on the register. So it is a, it's, it's an honor to be a CLG. It's something that we should want to preserve. I guess my question with regard to this particular case- the, the, the applicant, according to the minutes and so forth, actually then did receive the decision that they were, they, they, they received a positive, a positive decision based upon their original motion. And then I guess this, the, the painting was actually not considered then, correct? I mean, the painting of the brick?
The, the, there wasn't a denial of the painting of the brick because the application was amended during the meeting.
Right. So there's, you know, a little bit of that. And with regard to, I mean, obviously, you know, see the Secretary's of the Interior's guidelines that, you know, that you shouldn't paint bricks, that sort of thing. But there are breathable, there are some paints that have been deemed breathable for bricks. So that would, if they were to do something like that, they would have to use a product that would be appropriate.
Yes. Some, some localities do allow painting of non-historic brick or non, or structures that are non-contributing to the historic district.
And this is a non-contributing structure.
This is a non-contributing structure. It is eligible because of its age if we were to ever do a district expansion.
To become contributing.
And so therefore, we apply those standards, or that's been the recommendation at this point. Given that we're probably overdue for a consideration of additional structures in the historic district.
Absolutely.
However, yes, there are, are considerations and different paint types that could be possible to consider.
Yeah, but I can say that clearly, the, the Secretary of the Interior is, is moved in the direction of not, I mean, many years ago, there really were not that many prohibitions against painting brick. But that, that has changed considerably. So they are advocating not to paint. I guess they, we've seen the pictures of the way it deteriorates the brick. But I understand from an aesthetic point of view, there are some considerations there. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. That's worth it.
Uh, Councilor Day?
I have a question. So can you explain what is the difference in the brick a hundred years ago and the brick now? Why that might make a difference in, you know, in the painting and not painting it so people can understand?
Yeah, the, the brick, the current, the way that brick is made today is just different than it was in the past. And the brick today is harder than the softer brick that was done, you know, up until, I think, around the nineteen forties, is my understanding. And so because that brick is softer, you have to, there's different treatments to it. That includes, there's different moisture retention. You need to use different mortar than you might use on a, on a modern day brick. And there's different standards and advisory bulletins that are available that the National Park Service and the Secretary of the Interior has set forth to help people that own historic buildings make sure that they are, the changes and improvements that they make to those buildings are improvements over the long term. Because everybody wants to invest in their buildings, but might not, but not every contractor and not every homeowner may have the information and education to be able to maintain the, the historic structures and the historic materials. And so that's why those resources are available and that's why the Architecture Review Board exists to be able to advise on these matters.
Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else has any questions for Ms. Davis?
Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to acknowledge that there are some members of the ARB here tonight. Let's thank them for their service to the board as well.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. First that we have signed up is Kevin Randisi.
It's appropriate for me to speak on my own application.
Yes, yeah, this is where you want to talk about yours.
Obviously, I'm the applicant and I'm filing the appeal tonight. Couple of things. I listened to the speech that was given by Ms. Davis and she talks about being a liaison between the applicant and the ARB. She just spent the last five to 10 minutes advocating for the ARB's position, so I'm, I don't know. We'll take, we'll take it for that. But I filed this appeal based off of three things. Inconsistent standards, conflict of interest, basis for denial and the appearance of preconceived bias. In the B1 district, I counted over thirty-six buildings plus that have painted brick. And that excludes this building here that also has painted exterior brick. And the pictures that Ms. Davis shows, that there's, none of that is happening to this brick. It's not happening to any of the other brick that I see in downtown as well. I sent you guys, I sent the entire city council, I think the city attorney and the city manager, this appeal letter on October the thirteenth regarding my appeal. I don't know if you had had a chance to read it, but I'm just going to go over the basic, the basic bullet points of it as well. As far as inconsistent standards, the ARB approved brick painting on 425 East Broadway. I have the photos here that show it. It was an apartment building that had previously unpainted brick. This is what it looks like today. And they also approved painting of unpainted brick at 115 South Main Street. So again, here's the before picture. And here's the after picture. I'm asking to do the same thing to my building and I'm being denied. So that's my argument for inconsistent standards and selective enforcement. Let's see here. Conflict of interest. Let's see. The ARB chair during our meeting on October first, Mr. Hughes admitted on the record that he owns a building downtown and has painted the brick on that property as well. So the chair of the ARB committee is voting on whether I can paint my building, the brick on my building. And he's already painted the brick on his building as well. That I'm concerned about the appearance of preconceived bias. I feel like a decision was made before I even walked into that room on October first. In July, I never even got to notice that the ARB was having a meeting on my first application. They'd had the meeting. I was not even notified of the actual meeting itself. I was not notified until, I believe it was July 24th or July 31st via a phone call from Ms. Davis regarding my application. So I, I wasn't even notified of the meeting in July, so I couldn't have attended the meeting because I didn't know about it.
Mr. Randisi, your time is up.
Well, wait a second. I mean, she got to speak for like fifteen minutes. Yeah, I'm at room.
I know, but this is the public hearing now.
So she gets fifteen minutes. I give three.
You're going to have a time, because someone is probably going to have some questions for you. You'll have a time to continue if, if there are questions. All right. Next up is Ms. Laura Greenwood.
Hi. This is what I'm on. Let me explain real quick about ceramic and brick, okay? Brick is, then goes through a high fire kiln process. So it's hard as a rock, right? So what happens, remember when you get those antique plates that get crackly? You know, the antiques all have that crackly glaze on it? What happens is the bottom of that plate is what they call bisque. It's not glazed. It's bisque. It's just the hard ceramic. What happens is water absorbs under that over many years and then expands and then the grass doesn't give. Okay? That's what happens. Now, in order for brick, depending on the age, the older the brick, the more apt it's going to decay. And it does need to be sealed. The newer brick, not so much because it's under a higher fire and it's solid. The part that does decay is the mortar. The mortar is stuff that you squeeze out, which if you have a brick done, squeezed a few places. Anyway, that does expand and contract. It doesn't, it, but brick does not breathe, ma'am, whoever you are. It doesn't breathe. It's hard. It goes under a high, high fire kiln process, even the old stuff. But the newer stuff is even higher, so you can't screw it up. Now, I just went over to Lowe's and I worked at Lowe's for over four years. I built homes. I got a product, fifty dollars a can, that goes on brick. It's got an eight-year lifespan on it. It's not cheap, but it is good. And what it does is it seals that brick so moisture doesn't get in it. Because just like that bisque piece of, of plate, right, that's absorbed water, brick will absorb water. So by putting that paint on there, you're, you're preserving it. You understand? There's a difference. So I have to dispute this, this young lady's comments because that's the fact. This is the fact. Okay? My three minutes up?
Yeah, maybe you still got forty seconds.
Oh, thank you very much. Uh, and one other thing. We don't want to discourage businesses with a higher hurdle. We want businesses to come and work here, right? And produce, right? All right. I'm glad we're in agreement.
All right. Uh, next up is Mr. Ed Houser.
Ed Houser, Ward five. I did go to one of the meetings with Mr. Randisi. I listened to one of them on the board. They denied it because they didn't like the color. Another one on the board admitted, I've got a brick building painted. Same meeting, we had a young lady coming in there to get a sign approved for her business. And they were questioning about the sign. She goes, well, I can paint the building to match that. Guess what? She's like, yeah, she is painting a block building too. So how can this be fair for some, but not fair for all? And it's right back to the famous saying from Hopewell, if you turn right, you got to turn left. Which we don't see a lot of left turns around here anymore.
And one more thing there. I suggest you go back to the local government.
Uh, Mr. Mark Burrows?
Mark Burrows, Ward three, I think. Let me figure this out.
Ward three.
Um, so I'm not a brick technician. I'm not a brick maker or a brick builder. I have brick chuckers. I've lost a few of them, but don't know nothing about brick. What I do know about is that me and my wife moved to Hopewell because it was one of the few communities in the area that didn't have a whole lot of HOA. And we, we thought that we'd be able to have our house and live the way that we saw fit. Within reason, obviously, there's zoning codes, so forth and so on. Don't live like a heathen, whatnot. But we thought that we'd be able to enjoy our property the way that we saw fit, not have to come grovel before council, whether it be a HOA council or a city council, to do anything to our property. The majority of this evening's meeting has been consumed by conditional use permits or an appeal for property. I'm sorry, that's a problem to me, that we are having to grovel before a city council or an architectural review board, or whatever it's called, so that we can do things to property that we, under the guise of some form of protection or freedom or something. I don't know what you want to call it. Y'all sold us out when y'all joined a, what'd you call it, a certified local government and committed to that instead of to your citizenry so that you had access to grants. I understand the money is nice. Your citizenry is nicer. Without the citizenry, you have no need for the money. You, you, the, the grants are important. I understand that. But the same as they put limitations on us when we join these different organizations, these different accrediting agencies, so forth and so on, we also need to be putting our foot down and protecting ourselves to some extent as well to where some person who's never even stepped foot in the Hopewell can't walk in and say, oh, well, you can't do this to a building because, you know, it'd mess it up. A simple Google search while I was sitting right there, I found three different types of paint that are usable on brick that are breathable and are recommended for historic brick buildings, as a matter of fact, that are not considered a lime wash that Ms. Davis mentioned. There's other buildings within the city that, you know, it'd be nice if some architectural review board would invest a little bit more time into helping bring them even up to a non-embarrassing state of repair, rather than worrying about a gentleman wanting to improve the appearance of his building. We're the first to sit up here and talk about how rundown some of these buildings look, but the first to demand a conditional use permit when somebody wants to fix something. The hypocrisy has got to stop somewhere and I don't know where y'all planning on hitting the brakes at. So in my opinion, I'd much rather have a painted building that may fall apart in another hundred years than a building that's falling apart right now that nobody does anything about.
All right, that's all that I have signed up here for tonight. All right, at this time, is, well, excuse me, closed the public hearing. At this time, is there a motion to remand the ARP appeal? So move?
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Joyner and seconded by Councilor Ellis. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights. Well call please.
Councilor Harris?
Yes.
Need a pardon?
No.
Councilor Ellie?
Yes.
Councilor Day?
Yes.
Councilor LeFolles?
No.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Moving on to R five, Ms. Sharnick. Nick, you have to get up with Ms. Davis. She'll talk to you about the procedure. Ms. Bissette, do you mind explaining it to Mr. Randisi?
So the appeal's been sent back to the Architectural Review Board, can we hear it?
Okay. R five. Okay. Taking it that she is not here, moving on. R six, Ms. Robertson?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor and all the council. I'm Monique Robertson and I'm Director of Public Works. And I'm here to give the update on the Bank Street, James Street fire lanes. In April of twenty twenty-five, the Fire Marshal came forth and gave a presentation for fire lanes on Bank Street. And it was approved by council. Recently, we've been, we're going to move forward with putting those actual fire lanes down. On the next slide. The fire lanes that was recommended is on Bank Street itself. This is what the Fire Marshal recommended, the fire, the fire lanes going down Bank Street as well as painted on the James Street side, yellow paint on the James Street side with.
So nothing, nothing's being done, nothing's being done on Maplewood then? I'm sorry, I shouldn't talk.
No, ma'am. Nothing on Maplewood. On the next slide, you will see that there's, the fire lanes is on Bank Street across from the homes, the townhouses. And then there will be, yeah, uh, four signs there, the no parking fire lane signs there. And then on James Street, it'd be yellow painting on the sides, on the road, on the curbsides, excuse me. And there's two signs on each side of the road there for no parking fire lanes. Uh, the signage, excuse me, the signage would be made by our Public Works Department that, that will meet the MUTCD standard for the fire lane signs there. And that's what the sign would look like that would be posted. And that's what the sign would look like that would be posted. And then, um, that, um, fire lane would eliminate ten parking spaces on the Bank Street side. But as provided there, you'll see there's additional on-street parking. And that's approximately twenty-four parking spaces. That's within the walking distance of that. And that's just the highlights there, just saying the council approved it with Captain Gomes on February twenty-five. February eleventh of twenty twenty-five. Uh, the thermoplastic would go on the Bank Street side. Paint would be on the James Street side. Uh, Public Works will create the signage and identify the space with additional parking. You have any questions that I may be able to answer?
Uh, Vice Mayor Joyner?
I do, yeah. So back up for me, I'll just, I'm just, and I'm the one that asked to have this come, that taken off consent agenda because it'd been a while since we did this, and I want to make sure I understood what was going on again. So, um, the additional on-street parking is, um, we're picking up additional twenty-four spaces on, um...
We've identified that space.
We've identified them.
Yes, it's not so much as picking up extra because it is available now.
You've identified them. And, okay. And so when do we, when do we plan to actually put the fire lane to paint everything?
We can move forward as soon as, um, as soon as we say move forward, then we can schedule it.
I guess, you know, and obviously we approved it in February, but somehow Maplewood has gotten left out of this whole equation, and I'm just a little concerned about that. I mean, obviously, the main concern is fire safety. So if this is gonna accomplish.
Yes, I believe that's a separate project. This is only for the fire lanes that Captain Gomes.
Got it. Okay. All right. That sounds fine. Okay. Understand. But it is, it is a safety issue. I mean, there was a fire there and we've got, we had issues getting the equipment there. Okay. I, I understand now. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, Sina, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, moving on to R seven. Mr. Ward.
So Mayor, Vice Mayor, uh, members of council, this evening we are undertaking what's called a twenty-two thirty-two review. Um, and it relates to a proposed, uh, new development here in the city that is a battery energy storage facility that is, um, proposing to go in over at one oh five Winston Churchill Drive. Uh, just real quick, a twenty-two thirty-two review comes straight out of, uh, the Code of Virginia. And it basically is this. Uh, when a new public utility facility that is not specifically identified in our comprehensive plan, uh, comes forward, um, it requires the review and approval from the planning commission. And, uh, basically to affirm that that, that particular project is in substantial accord with our comprehensive plan, okay? So, um, hopefully that's clear enough that if it's not specifically identified as, as a project, say, in a, in a capital improvement plan, um, and a project comes along, it just needs to go through this review required by state code. And that's fifteen point two dash twenty-two thirty-two section of the code. That's where the twenty-two thirty-two comes from. So in this particular development at one oh five Winston Churchill Drive, um, there's, Arm Global is the, um, business that's already located there. This proposed development will actually be on either side of the existing Arm Global. Uh, this is an M-two intensive industrial, uh, ZEN property. Um, and the developers did obtain a zoning confirmation letter in twenty twenty-one that basically establishes that this use is a by right use, it does not require a conditional use permit. The proposed development includes twenty-eight, um, the acronym here, B E S S, Battery Energy Storage System. So there's twenty-eight of these units installed across these two areas of this site, um, comprising about five and a half acres. The Arm Global operation, which is a recycling facility, will remain in, on-site there. And, um, just so we're clear, that this battery energy storage facility is gonna operate independent of Arm Global. They are not tied together. Uh, basically, Arm Global is just utilizing this extra land on their site with these, um, batteries there. So when we undertake this review, we look at our comprehensive plan and, and we look to see if it generally, uh, supports this type of development. And in our comprehensive plan, it, it does affirm the importance of reliable utilities for the city. It's foundational to our economic development. Uh, the comp plan speaks to supporting advanced infrastructure and encourages land uses and facilities that are compatible, uh, in existing areas and slash zoning districts. And it also recognizes the importance of accommodating modern utility improvements, uh, in appropriate locations. So this image here on the left, um, this is what they will look like. They are Tesla lithium ion batteries. They are connected to the grid. They don't serve as Hope Well's specific backup power. It's not specific to Hope Well because it is connected to the grid, which the grid goes everywhere. Um, but it would support, uh, I spoke with a developer this morning. It, it would support, um, times when there's high demand on the grid that this battery storage, uh, system loads energy back into the grid. So it, it has the ability to prevent blackouts. Again, we look at the project alignment here. Uh, it's being proposed for M-two zoning, which is appropriate, and again, it is by right. The proposed facility does comport with all development standards, including buffering, fencing, and screening. So we've had numerous conversations with the engineers on this project. And of course, they are being held to, um, all of the development standards in Article eighteen of our ordinance. The facility does not encroach on any residential or environmentally sensitive areas, and it does support modern and reliable infrastructure. Staff's recommendation is essentially that the proposed location character and extent of the facility meet or exceed the expectations established by the plan with appropriate mitigation of impacts. Therefore, staff concludes the project is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Planning Commission, uh, came to the same conclusion on a four to zero vote to affirm substantial accord. And that was just recently on November sixth. Planning Commission held the public hearing. There was no comment received at that, at that, um, public hearing. So tonight, uh, council's responsibility is one of two things. Either one, to just essentially affirm the planning commission's determination that this project's in alignment with the comprehensive plan. Or two, you, you have the authority to override, uh, planning commission's determination. That's the end of my presentation. I'm available for any questions you may have, um, about this project and about the twenty-two thirty-two process.
Okay. Uh, Counsel Repoli and then Vice Mayor Joyner.
So we hear a lot of safety concerns about batteries and, um, putting fire out if it happens to occur and that kind of thing. So what kind of assurances from public safety do we have?
So we, uh, we've had extensive conversations with the developer, um, ourselves, uh, as well as, uh, Chief Rupert and the Fire Marshal. These particular facilities, um, there is a risk. Nobody's denying that there is a risk. They are lithium ion batteries, just like you would find in an electric vehicle. But these particular, uh, units come with fire suppression systems that are built into each unit. Um, they are outward facing. Um, so that would be things like if fire was approaching it from outside, um, it, it's able to extinguish that. Uh, secondly, they, uh, are required to provide an emergency operations plan, which they have provided a draft to the city already, and it's been reviewed by the Fire Marshal. Uh, it's not in final draft at this point, but it ultimately will be. Uh, within that emergency operations plan, they are also providing, correct me wrong if I'm wrong, Chief, but, um, there will be specific training for Hope Well Fire Department once this facility comes online. Am I correct? Uh, so there are those safety measures in place as well. Um, these types of facilities are subject to, uh, extensive regulation, uh, both at the federal, mostly at the federal level, but also somewhat at the state level. So, uh, DEQ oversees these types of facilities. And then there's, uh, several federal statutes that also deal with the system level safety of these types of developments. The chief has some more information specifically as to fire risk, if you'd like for him to, to speak to that.
Personally, I would like to hear more.
Sure. Chief?
Chief, do you mind?
Sure. So I know, um, one of the concerns that was brought up was, um, I think there was a significant fire in California at the beginning of the year, um, at a battery facility, a battery facility. Um, and, you know, again, before we, um, you know, looking at this facility when, when we did the site plan analysis, the, uh, the design of these being compartmentalized systems that are designed to be, to contain the fire within each one of those, uh, each one of those essentially containers. And then they're separated out so that they aren't, uh, encroaching upon one another and so forth and so on. So before even doing any research on, on that particular event, you know, we felt very comfortable as the Fire Department with addressing any issues that would occur at the facility. However, um, with, with that concern raised, I did a little research on that particular site. Uh, so in comparison, this is a forty megawatt facility that's being installed here in Hope Well. The, the facility in California was a three hundred milli, uh, megawatt facility, so it was, uh, seven hundred fifty percent larger than this. Um, it was also a completely different design. So that, that particular facility, um, was a warehouse style, and then all of the batteries are basically in racks, all under one roof. So all those batteries are exposed to one another. It's not compartmentalized as, as the facility is here. Um, when that event occurred, their fire suppression system did not work. Um, that was obviously a, a significant issue that occurred at that particular time. There was also a lot of concern from the, the smoke that was generated. I know there was a, there was a, a, a significant evacuation, concerns over the smoke. Um, the EPA was actually brought in during that event. They began, uh, uh, site monitoring of the air in all the vicinity around that, that facility. Um, and they have a, uh, statement that's still up on their website that at no point during the event was there any, uh, uh, risk to public health. Um, during, during the entirety of the event with all the smoke that was there, you know, they obviously made an evacuation initially just because of the unknowns. Um, but during the EPA's, uh, monitoring during the entire event, there was never anything that was outside of, uh, safety limits within, um, the area. Um, so all of those things, obviously, this was a, a, a completely different type of event. It was a completely different type of facility, a lot older technology. There's, there's a, there's a huge difference between what the event that occurred in, in California in January and what we're, uh, what they're proposing to build here in the city of Hope Well. Um, certainly, uh, lithium ion batteries, uh, do have a risk, and certainly there is a risk of fire. Uh, we feel relatively confident that, you know, if, if a fire were to occur at this facility, uh, the other thing about the facility, you'll notice that it was split in two. So essentially, even though it's a forty megawatt facility, it's almost split into two even smaller facilities. Um, and so again, the separation of the, of the, uh, of the facility itself, the separation between the units, it being an outdoor unit in self-contained units that have, uh, their own fire suppression system within each one of them, uh, gives us the confidence that, um, certainly that's not gonna be a good day for the, for the utility. Um, they're gonna lose a, probably one of those units. Um, but we feel confident that we can keep that from being any kind of issue for the public. Um, you know, it's gonna be an issue for them. They're gonna have to replace that. Uh, one of the other things that they've also provided at, at the city's request is a, um, a decommissioning plan. So if there ever was an issue, um, they actually will have a dollar amount sitting, uh, in an account prepared to clean up their, their, the issue and actually decommission and bring the site back to its, uh, uh, original, um, uh, um, uh, condition before they built the facility. So if at any point they decide not to use, uh, the facility any longer, um, they would be required to then completely decommission it to the point of even pulling up the, the cement, uh, that these things will be installed on and, and put it back exactly how it was before. They'll be required to maintain that amount. I think the initial was, uh, I believe it was close to seven hundred thousand dollars that they will keep in, in an account prepared to do that. Every five years, they'll reevaluate to determine if that amount is still appropriate. Uh, and if not, that amount can be increased if the cost of remediation increases. Um, so we also have, uh, uh, a good confidence that if this facility is, uh, becomes defunct for some reason, um, it will be decommissioned properly and that land can go back to being used for something else. Any other questions that I can answer as far as the fire concerns?
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor Joyner?
I'd just like to make a motion.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to move that, um, council, um, approve, um, the city administration's, uh, determination that the proposed battery energy storage, for, storage system facility is in substantial accord with the comprehensive plan.
Second it. Any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Counsel Harris?
Yes.
Mia Parton?
Yes.
Counsel Ellis?
Yes.
Counsel Day?
Yes.
Counsel Repoli?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion has been six zero.
Thank you. All right. Uh, moving on to R eight, Mr. Bennett.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. I'm coming to you tonight, um, with the recommendation for the machine and tools tax rebate program. If you'll recall, last meeting, I talked about the program, the rebate program that was sunsetting, uh, at December thirty-first of this year. I'm not here tonight to ask for action. This is, um, for me to present the recommendation based on, um, research analysis I've done and discussions internally, externally. And then we will advertise for a public hearing that will take place December ninth, which you will be taking action on for this ordinance. I do have draft language for the ordinance here, uh, for your review to end of my presentation. Just real quickly, um, since I'm the last, uh, person standing between you and your bed, I'm going to be brief. But, uh, machine and tools tax, um, we have for machine and tools tax in the city, uh, it's a three dollar and ten cents per hundred. The, um, uh, assessment is done at twenty-five percent of the original capital's, uh, capitalist cost. The, um, the rebate currently is set up that will sunset that, uh, they file February and report on what increased new equipment was put in place in the previous year. We then, for the first year and for two subsequent years, give them thirty percent rebate back on the tax they pay for a total of ninety percent over that three years. What I'm, uh, proposing, uh, just to keep in mind is that even though the program sunsets December thirty-first of this year, we still have three years of payouts that are coming ahead of us if no action was taken whatsoever. So we would be paying through the end of twenty twenty-eight for what they file this coming February fifteenth. What, um, we are, uh, proposing is essentially to change the way that we pay out, and rather than doing those payouts at thirty percent for three years, we're proposing to do a one-year payout of eighty percent of, of, of the rebate. And there's, there's two reasons for this, um, that I'm gonna go over. Actually, there's more than two reasons. But, um, the city of Hope Well, we receive our enterprise zone approval in five-year increments. And in the package, you'll see the letter we received from Governor Youngkin this past year that essentially it extended our enterprise zone renewal through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-nine. So if you think about that, twenty twenty-nine is when our enterprise zone expires, and we're eligible to apply again, but there's no guarantee we're gonna, we're gonna get that. We have right now two more years or three more years from, from, from today that we're running out. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to set it up to where, when the enterprise zone sunsets again, we won't have additional liabilities out in the future. So by pulling all that back to just one year, then the payouts will go through twenty twenty-eight and, uh, for, for work in twenty-five, and then work in twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, it'll just be on one-year increments. it'll just be on one-year increments. So, we can essentially sunset the tax rebate program to coincide with the sunset of the enterprise zone whenever that is. The, but the, there's four reasons, uh, really why we want to do this. One, as I mentioned earlier, the administrative work associated with the rebate program is very tedious for all the departments involved, the Treasurer, Commissioner of Revenue, my office, uh, tracking this over the three-year periods, and it's rolling. So, every year, manufacturers are adding new machine and tools, and then we're tracking, okay, that's year one money, that's year two money, that's year three money, that expired, so it's very tedious and, and, uh, and it, and there's a, a lot of opportunity for error there. Um, the other reason, as I mentioned, which is the sunset of our enterprise zone right now, scheduled for December thirty-first of twenty twenty-nine. Um, third reason is, if we do this strategy this way, then the city will start receiving the full benefit of the machine and tools tax in place two years earlier, as opposed to spreading that thirty percent out for three years. So, we're gonna take a big hit that first year, given the eighty percent out, but then the very next year, we're receiving the full benefit of the, of the tax, uh, revenue. And then also, by doing this, we'll, we'll reduce the benefit from ninety percent to eighty percent without changing the overall benefit to the industries, um, and I'm gonna show you the, the, the logic behind that. If you take and you pay out thirty percent a year for three years, uh, and you evaluate that in three different ways, you, you know, depending on the discount rate for money when you look at the present value over time, essentially, an eighty percent year-one payout is equivalent to a ninety percent paid out over three years. It's, it's, it's somewhere over five, five percent, uh, present value money over time, and, uh, it actually is a win-win for both of us. So, the industries, they actually get a bigger chunk of money earlier, which helps with cash flow, and then we get a return, uh, more, more money coming in year two. So, um, uh, everybody wins in, in that case, in addition to reducing the administrative cost. So, this is the, the proposed language that we have put together, and this language essentially takes the existing machine and tools tax code ordinance, and then it, it modifies in yellow, uh, what is being added, um, or, or stricken. And so, I'll just pause here for a second, let you read this first page, and I'll go to the, the second page and talk, talk through it.
Charles, why don't you just go ahead and just start, you know, talking through it? I mean, we've, we've got our agenda packed.
Yeah, we saw that.
Okay. Well, um, the changes here, basically, first, in first paragraph A, it takes twenty twenty-nine and changes that from two thousand and five, so we're essentially extending from twenty twenty-five to extend to, to two thousand and twenty-nine. We're then taken in paragraph C, and we're making a distinction between what, what improvements receive the old money, which is the, which is through December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-five, and those guys are still eligible for the next three years, thirty percent, thirty percent, thirty percent. We're basically weaning ourselves off that thirty percent, weaning the industries off that as we go, uh, forward. Everything, the end of paragraph C talks about everything new that's put in on or after January first of two thousand and twenty-six is gonna be eligible for that one year, that one-year payout. And the next page talks about what the qualifying in, in paragraph D, the qualifying applications before December thirty-first, and then afterwards. And, and, and it just changes it from ninety percent of net over three years to eighty percent over one year. So, if you guys are comfortable with the language in yellow, um, I've heard back, uh, today from, uh, one of the industry partners, they, they gave me a thumbs up. Um, as I mentioned, you all met with the Hopewell Manufacturers Association earlier this year in September and told them we were gonna be proposing something, and, uh, so far, we, um, we've only heard from one, but they, they gave it a positive, they said they're gonna be happy because it helps them with their cash flow to get the, the rebate back year one. So, happy to answer any questions. If you're good with this, then I'm gonna advertise in the newspaper with this language and come back for you to vote on it December ninth.
Are there any questions for Charles? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you, guys, we'll be back December ninth for you to take, take action.
And that concludes tonight's meeting, meeting is adjourned.